I want to thank you all for coming. I want to introduce, folks, it's welcome to Robert Zausmer, who is the appellate chief in the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania. He received a BA from the University of California at Los Angeles in 1982, and his law degree is from Stanford. So David Dabold is well-known to us, is the Chair of the Practitioners Advisory Group, PAG. He is a partner at the law firm of Gibson Dunn, practicing in the firm's appellate and constitutional law, securities litigation, and white-collar defense and investigations practice groups. Richard Bulkin is back for round two after this morning, and he was on a previous panel. John Sands has been in the Federal Public Defender's Office in the District of Arizona since 2004, and a frequent testifier here. He loves it, he keeps coming back for more. He joined that district as an Assistant Federal Public Defender in 1987. Welcome to all of you. I think all of you were here this morning, but just in case you weren't, there's the red lights go off, and then the hook, and then we jump in after everybody's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Your Honor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having me back. It's an honor again to appear on behalf of the Department of Justice, here to talk about several issues, as you know. First, with regard to the single-sentence rule. The Department supports the amendment that would adopt the view of the Sixth Circuit to correct this quirk regarding the single-sentence rule that prevents the application in a handful of cases involving career offenders and other recidivists. We think it's fairly obvious that somebody should not avoid a recidivism provision simply because they committed extra crimes that were also prosecuted and sentenced at the same time as the predicate crime of violence or drug trafficking conviction. We've submitted a detailed letter which gives particular suggestions on how to do this because it affects not just the career offender provision, but also other recidivism provisions in the guidelines, and I'm happy to answer any questions and get down into the details of that that's in our letter. Second, with regard to the mitigating role suggestion, the Department, I think in agreement with my friends here on the panel, largely agrees with the suggestions that the Commission has made, agreeing that a mitigating role should be measured against the average participant in the same offense, as opposed to being measured against the same type of offense in general. It's just much more practical and simpler to impose, would relieve quite a burden on the parties and the judge in particular cases. So we support that, and we also have no objection to the suggestion that there should be an additional list of factors that may be included in defining what's a mitigating role. The important thing there, of course, is to make clear that it's a non-exclusive list because, of course, these cases are all different, and it shouldn't be binding. The one objection that we do have, and again, I'm happy to address this in response to questions, involves the change regarding people who are already being sentenced only for the conduct involved in their own offense, usually drug quantity or fraud amount. It already says in the guidelines that such people are not precluded from a mitigating role adjustment, even though their sentence is already limited to their own conduct. The suggestion has been made, and there is no explanation given why, of changing it to "may receive" as opposed to "not precluded." This has already been read, as we see from the testimony introduced by my defense colleagues here, it's already being read as a suggestion that more of these people should get reductions, and that doesn't make sense to us for the reasons explained in my letter. It's basically giving a bonus to people for engaging in criminal conduct with other people as opposed to engaging in criminal conduct by themselves, which is against the ordinary principles of sentencing. And so that's the one part of the mitigating role suggestion that we do not agree with, and I'll address that more if you like. And finally, with regard to relevant conduct, again, the main proposal that's been made by the Commission, no disagreement from us, as long as it's made clear that this is not a substantive change. Our basic view regarding the relevant conduct provisions specifically with regard to jointly undertaken activity is that it's not broke, it doesn't need to be fixed. The courts well-understand this. The suggestion that's been made is to make it clear, break down in the rule, that the conduct has to be within the scope of the agreement that the person has reached, that's already in the commentary, and we have no objection to that being in the text of the rule itself, as long as it's made clear that there are no substantive changes intended. In preparation for my testimony, I did review cases from all the circuits to make sure that our understanding is right, that judges basically get this, and I didn't find any authority in any of the circuits that suggests that this is a problem, that there are judges out there who don't understand that jointly undertaken activity has to be within the scope of the person's agreement, and that it's not necessarily as broad as a conspiracy that the person might have been convicted of. These issues were settled by this Commission back in 1992, and it appears that it's been faithfully applied by the courts ever since. I mean, you all know well that in the early days of this Commission, this may have been the number-one issue of how to sort out relevant conduct after the initial guidelines were published. And it was sorted out by 1992, and we think that it's well-understood and that further adjustments really aren't necessary, and then it comes down to a case-by-case adjudication that judges have to engage in. So again, I welcome your questions, I look forward to discussing it further, and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Judge Saris and members of the Commission. As I near the end of my second and term-limited final term as the Chair of the PAG—
Oh, really?
—it's my pleasure to be before you, speaking once again about proposed amendments. It was sort of a walk down memory lane to hear Professor Bowman talk about his time at the Commission 20 years ago. For me, it was 24 years ago, serving in that same capacity when I was an Assistant U.S. Attorney, so I've, as my colleague has said, followed a lot of these issues over those many years. The two topics that I want to address in my oral testimony today are the relevant conduct provision and the mitigating role provision that the Commission has proposed amendments for. And obviously, there's some overlapping principles with these two provisions. The most common element of them, obviously, is that they both address situations where a defendant is not acting alone under the relevant conduct provision that you're looking at in this amendment cycle. It's what conduct by other persons gets counted in the sentencing of the defendant, as long as that conduct was part of the same jointly undertaken criminal activity. And then, of course, in the mitigating role provision, the question is, after you've determined that universe of conduct and you've done your Chapter Two calculations, what in what way is the defendant's role, if it's mitigating in some way, going to lead to a lower recommended punishment? As the Commission knows, the PAG has long recommended changes to the first of those provisions in general, the relevant conduct guideline, for at least two reasons. The first being that the punishment oftentimes does not very closely relate to what the defendant's culpability is for the criminal conduct as a whole. And secondly, for purposes of consistency, we found that despite what you may see if you go to the reported cases in the federal reporter, you're going to see each circuit more or less agreeing on what the principles are, but as you all know, very few of the cases make their way up to the Court of Appeals, especially when there's a guilty plea. So what's really going on that you need to pay attention to is what district judges are doing on a case-by-case basis, and I know that's one reason why the PAG exists, is to get our experience in those sort of in-the-trenches-type situations. And our experience has been that judges do oftentimes take different approaches to what jointly undertaken criminal activity a defendant should be held responsible for. So we're very glad that the Commission is addressing this, to the extent it is in the current amendments, as proposing to make clearer that there's a three-part test, the first part being what is the universe of activity that the defendant agreed to jointly undertake with the other individuals, and then, of course, whether the other conduct that they're going to be held accountable for was in furtherance of that same universe of activity, and finally, to what extent the defendant foresee it or intend it, or what other level of knowledge, if you will, should apply there. On the first factor, we do appreciate the Commission offering greater guidance, and we do suggest extending that out a little bit based on the factors that are identified in the case that we cite from the Second Circuit, the United States versus Studley. We think that those factors are very helpful, and that it would be useful for district judges to have the benefit of that in the guideline provision. And on the third factor, there's an important difference between the foreseeable consequences of one's own acts, which, as my colleague's letter points out, we frequently hold people responsible for the foreseeable consequences of their own acts, but it gets much more attenuated in terms of responsibility when you're talking about the foreseeable consequences of a foreseeable act of another person who is supposedly acting in furtherance of the same activity. And we think that that is a line that oftentimes will, if it's drawn the way that it currently is in many courts, it leads to greater punishment than is warranted by the circumstances. On the mitigating role provision, as an initial matter, we are in agreement with the Department of Justice on how to resolve the circuit split. As a general matter, we think that Chapter Two is where you look at what the offense conduct is, and in Chapter Three is when you start looking more closely at the defendant's part in that offense conduct. Not a perfect division, sometimes there are things in Chapter Two that also are defendant-specific, but it's a good general principle that we have found to be workable, and therefore, it would be most sensible to have a judge look at the person's role with respect to the criminal activity that's already been accounted for in Chapter Two, under the Chapter Two guideline. Stepping back, though, we do disagree with the Department on whether or not judges are using the reduction under the mitigating role provision for either a minor or minimal participant at a rate that's commensurate with the facts of the cases that come before the judges. There are a very small number of cases where this reduction is awarded, and we think that there are a number of situations where defendants do play what is truly a minor role, even though they might be essential to the scheme, even though their own conduct has been limited already. And we think that the amendments that are proposed here, along with our suggestions in our letter, and my written testimony, are a good way to try to get judges to recognize that more frequently.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Again, I wanted to thank all of the Commissioners for the opportunity to be here today and the opportunity to speak and participate in these panels. POAG submitted a letter, and I just wanted to highlight a few points on the single-sentence rule, the jointly undertaken criminal activity, relevant conduct, and the mitigating role. First, on the single-sentence rule, POAG prefers the approach, the Williams approach, that predicate offenses be evaluated independently when multiple convictions are being considered as a single sentence for criminal history scoring purposes. The one potential application issue that POAG highlighted, our potential circumstances were different time periods may be applicable when multiple counts are independently examined. The example that's in the commentary of the amendment kind of highlights that, the one that has a trespass conviction has two years imprisonment, grouped with the robbery conviction, one year imprisonment. In this example, two different time periods would have applied under 4A, 1.2E, 10 and 15 years. So there will be circumstances in which the single-sentence would have received criminal history points, but the predicate conviction, in this case being the robbery, would not have. POAG also believes that any predicate conviction that independently receives one criminal history point should apply as a crime of violence or controlled substance offense, regardless of whether or not they have four or more one-point convictions. As for the jointly undertaken criminal activity, POAG is pleased with the revisions to 1B 1.3 and making the three-part analysis structure more visible within the relevant conduct guideline. Circuit representatives observed that this area of application is often misunderstood and misapplied, and the members all agree that this change will encourage fidelity to correct guideline application principles. Regarding the possible policy changes, the option A and the option B, raising the state-of-mind requirement, a majority of POAG members believe that a more restrictive state-of-mind requirement would be a significant policy change to the guidelines. As a potential consequence, defendants could potentially have a greater incentive to falsely deny or frivolously contest what is now considered relevant conduct. Option B, we believe this change would place prosecutors in a position to have a greater influence on the ultimate sentence of a defendant. The system as it exists now, defendants are generally treated consistently for the acts of others. As far as mitigating role, POAG believes limiting the assessment of a defendant's role in the criminal activity rather than the activity in a typical crime doesn't rectify the disparities that we see across the country of how mitigating role is applied, and it may also even have the reverse effect and cause more division of how it's applied across the country. We believe consistency is very important, given the impact of the mitigating role cap in 2D 1.1. One recommendation POAG has is for the Commission to study circuits that less frequently apply mitigating role and study circuits that apply it more often, and kind of do an examination of the case law of why, what the barriers are for not applying it, and what the case law is for applying it in the greater number of cases in some districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gratified and honored to be in front of the Commission testifying on behalf of the federal defenders. It is an important function that the Commission has in front of it, and the defenders play a key role in advising and commenting on the amendments. We have submitted an extensive comments, and I wish to thank Denise Barrett and Laura Mait of the Sensing Resource Council for their diligent work. I had prepared remarks, but I sat here this morning, and I heard the various panels and the Commission wrestle with various aspects, and I am going to take a step back and say, why are these amendments important, and why, in the case of one, isn't it? In terms of mitigation, the why is obvious. It cuts across drugs, it cuts across fraud, it cuts across every type of offense. The original sin, from our point, of the Commission was linking culpability with amount. That sin can be expiated with a role, with what culpability. Time and time again, when we have been in front of the Commission, we have urged you to look again at role in the offense. Last year is an example. We introduced you to Oscar. Molly Roth testified for us. Oscar is a courier that was bringing drugs across the border. His family was ill. He was trying to make a quick buck to help his family, and he was caught. We argue that there should be a rollback in the drug offense level, and Commissioner Robluski said, "Well, of course, he's going to get a mitigating role. Of course, he will be reduced because his role as courier is not as significant as others." Well, the stats that we have provided and that your staff knows indicates the wide disparity, unwarranted, between various districts. We have the Eastern District of New York, where 30% are given minimal or minor role, and then the Middle District of Florida, where only 5%. Both of those are dealing with the various types of drugs. Turning to the border, we have Arizona, where we're looking at roughly 10%, I think actually 9% getting mitigated role. Right next door, in Southern California, we're looking at 70% and almost 73%, where New Mexico is looking at 40% of those getting minimal. Texas is looking at, I believe, 20% in Texas Southern and 30% in Texas Western. How can we justify Oscar, the courier, going on a highway and seeing a sign saying El Paso or Los Cruces? If he goes to El Paso and gets caught, he's going to have three out of 10. Los Cruces, he's looking at seven out of 10. If he gets diverted to Arizona, he would get me, but unfortunately, he would only get it 10% of the time. That needs to be changed. Same way with fraud. This is a chance for the Commission to really look at role and to expand it broader. In addition, barring from inflation, we think the Commission should actually increase the role for minimal, increase the adjustment for minimal or minor. As the drugs and fraud and penalties have ratcheted up, the role has stayed the same. If we go back to 1987, there's an argument that it should be terribly reduced. In terms of single-sentence, as the yellow light comes on, why? It doesn't affect but a handful, and it respects the State Court judge who has given the sentence. She felt it was appropriate, let it lay. The problem is with career offender, which everyone agrees sweeps too broadly. To do this little tinkering would be just to exacerbate an already unfair situation. And lastly, in terms of jointly undertaken, we believe with my co-panelists that a restructuring is in order to make it clearer, and it goes to intent. All of these things are looking at what the person really intended to do before we put him in prison. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Maybe I'll jump in. So I'll start with what I thought was sort of a sleeper, which was single-sentence. And it seemed as if the Williams case logically had it correctly, and then I started getting worried when I saw the Department say, "And we should do it for 2L, and we should do it for 2K, and we should do it for..." I forget what it all, but adding and adding and adding, and I understand logically why you did that. So what I'm really trying to figure out, because Williams was a career offender case, which has some statutory obligations that come with it. So I want to understand this across the board, from the prosecutors, the defense attorneys, the probation officers. What is happening in the field? I'm told from my people that it's impossible, it's very difficult to code for this, to figure out what's actually happening with these multiple sentences, and to know whether or not your proposal to add in 2L and 2K, and your suggestion that, in fact, it's going to dramatically change how career offender people... So what is happening in the field right now? Maybe I can start with the prosecution. In the United States of America, are most people following the Williams case, the Eighth Circuit or the Sixth Circuit, I guess it is?
The issue comes up infrequently, Your Honor. We don't have data, the Commission doesn't have data. We can only speak from talking to all of our colleagues, that it comes up occasionally around the country, but not very often. We had one case in the Third Circuit I can speak of where we lost it. The case came back for resentencing because of the King application of the single-sentence rule. So it does happen, but it's not a large number. Our view on this is, it's an obvious mistake, it's easy to correct. The Commission has suggested an obvious correction, and we advocate it.
Let me ask, so to your knowledge, would that be changing the practice in the immigration cases in huge numbers that we don't know about?
Not at all. And, you know, my colleague, Mr. Sands, in his submission, said both that this is a minor thing affecting very few cases, and then said it'll drastically increase the application of career offender. I don't believe the second part of that is correct. I don't think this would have a significant effect on any of these provisions we're talking about, it's just a logical fix.
Is it possible afterwards to just do a survey and find out how often this issue comes out?
We'll be happy. I can tell you, the quasi-sort of survey I did, as you know, I'm part of the Appellate Chief's Working Group of the Department. I asked all my colleagues informally around the country, and the answer I got back is what I've given you, which is that some people have seen it, but this doesn't come up often. If you'd like more than that, we're happy to do it.
So from the point of view of the defense attorneys, does this come up anyplace?
It comes up very rarely, but when it does come up, it has the pernicious effects of greatly increasing the sentence, as we pointed out in the Williams. The fact is that it hadn't come up for the 15 years that the Sixth Circuit, sorry, that the Eighth Circuit case was on the books. It's just not coming up in the field. I have spoken with the defenders, it's very, very rare. I've spoken with my colleague from the probation office, and he's not seeing it. But when you start going across various offense levels, immigration, firearms, you're moving from Chapter Four to Chapter Two, and you get these pernicious effects, and we would urge the Commission, if they're going to deal with career offender, deal with it honestly, deal with it broadly, don't tinker in this, which really just affects a few cases, and a judge can sentence with an upward or with a down.
And from the probation point of view, are most people following Williams?
Your Honor, I did do an informal survey of all the circuit reps and all their points of contact across the country, and this is extremely rare, as my colleagues have said. And I also asked them, "Well, how do you train new probation officers on this very topic?" And to be honest with you, they all said, "This is too complex to try to train a new officer on," so we haven't trained it, to be honest. But I found one circuit that actually had a case. Most of the responses were, "We've never seen one of these cases." But I had a recent one in the Ninth Circuit that was relayed to me, where the judge did side with more the King side of it, and based on the rule of lenity. But for a majority of all the officers across the country, they see a predicate offense in a group that's a single sentence, and they're going to count the predicate offense. That's the way they're doing it now. So the way they're doing it now—
All the recidivist statutes—
Exactly, all the guidelines. If they see a predicate offense in there, they're counting it. They're counting it. And like I said, that's pervasive across the country. We did look at the amendment, and we believe that the amendment clarifies the issue for us and makes the application easier.
You've invited questions, so I'd like to accept the invitation. In the submission from the Justice Department, I'm now talking about the change of language with respect to mitigating role. And it changes, or the proposal is to change it from "not precluded," from a reduction for mitigating role, versus "may receive." And you say, well, you say two things about it. You say this apparently nudges someone, the judge, in favor of something that would result in a lesser sentence, which I think you're absolutely right. I mean, that's the point of it. The point is that you want the judge to consider, "Not precluded" doesn't mean that a judge considers something. You actually want to highlight the fact that the judge ought to consider this in sentencing. But you say that the Commission hasn't given any reasons for this change or for this proposal. And do you have information that's contrary to what Mr. Sands is saying? What Mr. Sands is saying is based upon his viewing of the statistics, there is a fairly wide and significant disparity among judges' practices with respect to this adjustment. Do you have evidence to the contrary? Because our job is to try to avoid these disparities.
Of course, I do. Let me make a couple of points on that, if I may, Your Honor. Thank you for the question. I think what Mr. Sands is talking about, very valid points, is different from what this amendment is about, if I may, once we study it. The amendment focuses on one type of mitigating role, which is the person who is being held responsible only for his own conduct, despite the fact that he or she was part of a broader organization. That's one limited subset. Mr. Sands is looking at the world of mitigating role adjustments, whether somebody is held responsible for their own conduct or joint activity, and he's identified these disparities that may very well exist. And so my answer is, I think it's totally appropriate, and the Department would be happy to participate, for the Commission to examine this issue that Mr. Sands has raised. Right now, we don't have enough data to know, as I think he himself said, we don't have enough data to know what disparity is really going on here. Simply to say that one district has 10% and the next one over has 70% tells us only part of the story. We also need to know, how do these districts charge? Are they charging people with jointly undertaken activities such that a mitigating role adjustment then becomes more likely? Or are they carefully only charging people who are coming across the border with a specific amount, and then a mitigating role adjustment is less likely? I don't know where we get the data to study things like that, but we need that— things like that, but we need that kind of information. But my real point here is that this amendment only targets one little subset. And that, and not in a way that is really necessary, given what the language that's already there.
Well, there's a difference between whether something's necessary, and whether something is, as a matter of policy, something that ought to be adhered to or at least considered. It was not the intention of the proposed amendment to change the policy. I mean, what it was, was to have judges consider it. And there's a real difference, I know, in the, in the administration of sentences. If something is, if the word is, you can't consider it, or you're not precluded from considering it, rather as it is here, then the judge says, okay, I could if I wanted to. When, when it said may consider, it is something that, that a defense lawyer or prosecutor would encourage a judge to think about in terms of sentencing. So if you're against the thing in principle, then you're also against the preclusion of it. But if you accept that it can be considered, I don't know why there's a really principle difference between saying it can't be considered, I mean, it can be, it can't be prevented from being considered on the one hand, versus may be considered on the other. It is a semantical difference, but I'm concerned about whether it's a matter of principle you're saying.
No, Your Honor, we would welcome if a commentary were added, one line saying what you just said, which is that this is not a change in policy, it's simply to assure that judges are aware of it. Our objection, you know, fitters away at that point. The, our concern was that, and it was read, you know, looking at the defense testimony that was submitted here, Ms. Foti, who was here this morning, who's not here now, she, her group from New York supported this amendment, because they said it should cause courts to apply the mitigating role adjustment more frequently. And then the defenders went further, and they suggested, we just eliminate, the language should actually encourage the application of this reduction to everybody. If what Your Honor is suggesting...
Everyone.
Well, I think their language exactly was that, was that it said, people who are in this situation where they've already, or they're only being held accountable for what they traffic, nevertheless, quote, should generally be considered for an adjustment. So they're going even further. If what Your Honor is suggesting is, we want to make it clear to judges, you can do this. We think judges already know it, but if it needs that reminder, and we cited, I think, a case from the Eleventh Circuit, that, or the Seventh Circuit, rather, that reversed the lower court, because it didn't understand it. But so if more explanation is needed, fine, but we would suggest that the commission make clear, this is not a change in policy, this is not a suggestion, for example, that the defenders would advocate.
But you do see that practically speaking, it's so much, to tell a judge that something may be considered is so different from saying you're not precluded. Hasn't that been your experience?
I will never argue with Your Honor over the interpretation of language like that.
Oh, I, you probably win. I, I'm not...
This distinction still eludes me, but...
No, I mean, we've had discussions about it, and I certainly understand. I'm just saying that I've seen enough defense lawyers who are, who feel that maybe they ought not to make the argument to the judge that this adjustment should be made on the basis that it simply says, the judge could if he wanted to, rather than the change in the language to say it may be considered, because that is an invitation. I agree. It's an invitation for the judge to think about something.
Well, I can also tell you, if it makes the commission feel any better, I mean, I was there before 2001, when the department took the position, and many circuits agreed that a person in this situation was simply ineligible, that if you were held accountable only for your quantity, you were ineligible. I made those arguments in court. We understand the adjustment that the commission made in 2001 by saying not precluded. I and my colleagues have not made that argument since.
I heard it a month ago.
Except for that person, except for that person who we need to...
Except in the First Circuit.
And we need to talk to that person.
But your own letter said that the Eleventh Circuit, which had adopted the position that you said was the right position, took the commission's change as an adoption of its position, right?
It was artfully said, but the Eleventh Circuit is certainly in sync with the guideline.
Which would mean it didn't change anything. I would assume that the department's lawyers are arguing, and that circuit didn't change anything.
No, I acknowledge that. It changed the arguments the department made. We argued flatly against the mitigating role adjustment. We now recognize, except for that wayward AUSA in Boston, we recognize that it is permissible, and we will make appropriate arguments on the facts in each case.
That wayward AUSA jointly undertook this, with its ability, and should be punished.
No, but in all fairness, though, I mean, I don't want to hack on this one, A, but it is the, it was the culture in Massachusetts that if you were a courier with X amount of drugs, and you were only being attributed that amount of drugs, that you didn't get minor role reduction. And then I hear, it's a great thing being on the commission, wah ha, and other parts of the country, people are routinely getting that, would you agree with that?
Yes. In New Mexico, like my fellow panelists just brought up, 73% of the time, you get a role reduction in New Mexico. And 40% of that 73 is a minimal role. So in backpacker cases coming across the border, they're held responsible for the amount of marijuana that they have on their back, but they also get the minimal role. But, you know, in some districts, it's built into the fast track program, too.
Yeah, I was going to agree with Judge Breyer. The intent of the commission here is not to change policy, but just to ensure that judges actually consider whether they should give it. But it doesn't address the big issue that we considered before, and the position used to be in many circuits, that you are precluded if you're the backpacker, and you're responsible only for what's on your back, or you're the person driving the load in, and there were...
Debby, I think your thing isn't on. Sorry. So there were, there were many courts...
Would you say that because there are a lot of people out there in there?
Yeah, let me repeat. I do agree with Judge Breyer that we don't intend to... But, so the commission wants to ensure that courts consider this. And, I'm speaking for myself, I'm okay with this, but I mean, the bigger issue is what Mr. Sands points out. When I was in AUSA in San Diego, every single importation case, the defendant was charged routinely with that amount they brought in, and they routinely got minus two, rarely got minus four. But you contrast that with Western District of Texas, with Middle District of Florida, and we have these different cultures. And different district court judges are just, the culture of the court is to give it or not to give it. So unless the commission says no in all cases or yes in all cases, I don't know that we're going to do anything to eliminate the disparity across the country. Do you all disagree?
Can I make a point on that, Commissioner, if I may?
Language matters. Words matter. A grudgingly can consider is sort of a presumption not to. May, or better yet, should consider is more than a nudge, it is a direction that you need to look at the chapter, to look at the individual, and as we suggested in our wording, his role and, and participants in similar schemes. It's a way of having a judge focus on this. It makes no sense in Las Cruces for someone to get 70% chance, and then just across the river in El Paso to only, quote, have a 30% chance, while in San Diego, it's close to 70, Arizona, 9%. We need to do something in our language, and the change would affect that.
And one point I wanted to make in the discussions that I've had, been involved in with mitigating role, the term that always seems to come up is, was the participant essential to the drug trafficking conspiracy? And by that logic, the courier is always going to be essential. So how would they ever get the mitigating role? And I was looking for the language in the guideline. I was just thumbing through it real quick, and I couldn't find it. I might have read that in some case or something like that. But the language that I come up, the language of essential to the drug trafficking conspiracy, when you want to examine that sentence alone, you can pretty much preclude everybody from getting a mitigating role. It's hard to fit somebody into that category. And in, like John said, in the border district that I'm from, we don't look at couriers that way. They are, they are couriers. Yeah. They are essential to the drug trafficking conspiracy, but they're, they're less culpable than other participants in that drug conspiracy. So we feel that the mitigating role does apply, but that's not a universal approach across the country in any, it's very, this is probably the one guideline that we find on POAG that is the most dissimilarly applied across the board, across the country. This, this one guideline.
You haven't had your opportunity to respond. But if you did get that language from case law, I really wonder whether a change by the commission, especially one where the distinction still eludes me, is going to make much of a difference if the governing case law of the circuit...
Excuse me, I think you're...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's so counterintuitive that you have to have the stupid button pressed up instead of down for it to work. But, but if the case law would suggest that you're not eligible, then a dislike change in wording by the commission's not going to make any difference, is it?
But, but it's, but it's, they're interpreting a guideline, which the commission could change the language on. I agree on the not, you know, if they're essential to the scheme, they shouldn't be disqualified if the language...
Yeah, but so if we change it from is not precluded to may, that's going to have a seismic shift in case law, the circuits?
No, it won't. And our position has been that it's, it's a helpful addition, among other things, including the factors that we've identified in our written testimony of things that a judge should consider in deciding whether there's a mitigating role. We do think, we agree, I think we all agree, that the courts do need more guidance and perhaps more examples. What you've proposed is helpful, but I don't think it's going to be enough in the long run. I think this is something the commission is going to want to come back to, if you aren't able to address it more fully this time around. Because we are, we are talking on this one issue about a very small change that, you know, is good as far as it goes, but it's not going to, it's not going to solve the problem.
The point I was going to make, and I think it echoes, Your Honor, if I may, it echoes what you're saying, which is that this change here that's being suggested doesn't get at the problem that everybody's talking about. I hear the problem people are talking about is couriers coming across the border or somewhere else. And there may be a disparity in the way, and I don't know, in the way people are treated in San Diego and El Paso or wherever. The, that needs to be studied. We need to know, how are they charging those cases? Is there a disparity? Why is it there? This proposal, however, applies to every mitigating role. It applies to fraud cases, it applies to robbery cases, applies to everything, and doesn't seem necessary unless the commission believes we need to make this language suggestion, make clear it's not a change in policy, it's just a reminder. Fine. But this is not getting at the issue that everybody else is discussing.
If you narrowed it down to this particular problem, which is the courier backpacker problem, where across the country, we continue to hear it's being disparately applied, could we carve it off, would the department agree that if somebody, those factors we laid out, if there was not much gain, and if someone had narrow view of the scope of the conspiracy, in general, they should get a minor role reduction, which would pretty much pick up most couriers?
I think probably, I don't have the final authority to tell you right now, because it hasn't been, it wasn't...
I know, I did that before. I thought I'd get away with it again.
But no, I'll tell you, generally, yes, we would agree. I can also tell you about courier cases that we've handled, where we, you would not apply the mitigating role adjustment, where you have people who are regular committed couriers, it's what they do for a living. You would not give them a mitigating role adjustment. So we need to make sure what the language says, so that it's not just across the board, and every courier gets a mitigating role adjustment.
Well, sure, but if we, if we sort of put a little thumb on it through an example, which is what people are suggesting, for the classic one everyone struggles with, which is the person who doesn't make much money, and doesn't know the scope of the conspiracy, but is actually carrying, you know, the ounces across, or the, a border, or even in a truck, which I see. You would say that that example would at least cabin the possible damage of saying to generally, but also get rid of some of this disparity in a way consistent with DOJ policy.
I think it's possible, and I think it's a very good thing to look at and address promptly.
Should be a minimal. 70% California, I mean, judges should...
You would say that person was minimal?
Yes. Because you can pick up someone across the border. If that person says no, you just go across. They are fungible. Unfortunately, the people use them as, as just a driver at that time.
Mr. Sands, I think actually you highlight the problem for judges, which is that, that judges will take a look at cases, the one you've just cited, and the one you cited, and come, maybe come to very different conclusions as to how culpable that person was. What the reason for the change in the language was to try to get judges across the country to consider it, to think about it, to have a presentative. They came, they may adopt your view, they may adopt your view, fine. There will always be these disparities, and by the way, they may be warranted, given local circumstances, given the repeat nature of the offender, or the offender's continuing participation, and so forth. But just going back, so I want to leave here with a, with a firm idea that if we put it in, if we make sure that it's not viewed as a change of policy, if it's looked at that way, made it clear, then you don't have a problem with it.
That's correct.
So I have a different line of question. It's really for Mr. Debold and Mr. Zeimer. And that is, whether in jointly undertaken activity, we should have a requirement that it be charged under Pinkerton or some other form of conspiracy? And what I wanted to get a sense of is, the government said if we were to make that requirement, that would inevitably result in the filing of additional charges, in order to assure that the defendant is properly charged. But the advisory group's comments was, yes, do this, this would be a good thing. I mean, would that still be your view, if the department is saying, what we'll just do in response is start charging more people with conspiracy? I was trying to get a sense of the lay of the land here, in terms of what's the government's current view on when you charge conspiracy? Because I, I think that you just have two different conceptions of whether, you know, I think the, the government is of the view, we want the extra sentencing, so we'll start charging more if that's what we have to. And right now, we're not charging it, because we're getting it anyways under this provision. And I take it, the advisory group's vision of this is, if you really want this, we'd rather have, maybe you'd rather have them charge it, because you think in some cases, the government actually won't charge, because they're not charging it means that they don't want the extra sentence. So I'm just, I see two different visions of what this would actually do, and I'd like it if you could both comment.
Yeah, I did, I did get a chance to look briefly at the written testimony, and it doesn't change our view on that. I will say, though, that the, the change that we view as more important, and probably more workable, is the first of those two that we discuss in the written testimony, which is to raise the intent requirement. We think that actually is the more important one, and probably, I mean, I recognize that there's the risk of inconsistency that comes with the, you have to charge it for it to apply, because then you do put the decision in the hands of the prosecutors, and that does make it harder for consistency across the country. But in this situation, we're kind of dealing with the lesser of evils. And, but we do think that if you raise the intent requirement, and have the other changes that are in there, and that we also recommend, that, that that's probably the best way to approach the issue, although we do still advocate the, the change that you were asking us both about.
Well, there are a number of pieces to the answer, Commissioner. The, the government generally does charge conspiracy. There are all sorts of good reasons for the government to have a conspiracy charge. But there will be cases in which, by the time you get to sentencing, and you have a fuller understanding of the facts, and you're presenting all the relevant facts to the judge, it is appropriate to argue that there was jointly undertaken activity, even if there wasn't a conspiracy charge. So our only suggestion in the letter was, is this going to push a prosecutor to prophylactically add conspiracy charges, even where those few situations where that might not have happened?
Would that be consistent with the U.S. Attorney's Manual, though, to prophylactically charge? That seems like not acceptable under your charging policy.
Obviously, we follow the manual, and would depend on the circumstances. But let me add that, the reason, I just take exception to the thought in general, is that Pinkerton liability and conspiracy liability, this commission has direct, this was one of the results of 1992, is broader than jointly undertaken activity for which somebody is responsible. So it doesn't, it would be odd to say, we need to charge somebody with this broader liability. Pinkerton liability, as established by the Supreme Court, is much broader than many people's relevant conduct. It would also be inconsistent with one of the basic understandings of the guidelines, which is that it looks to the real offense and not to the charging. The reason, as I understand it from Judge Wilkins' writings, for that original proposition, that we're going to base the guidelines not on the number of charges the government can bring against you, but on what you actually did, is to reduce the government's power, is to reduce the prosecutor's power, to control the sentence by the number of charges that they bring. So these are, these ideas that I think are inconsistent with the way the guidelines have been set up, which is to look at the person's specific agreement to jointly undertake an activity, and to look at the real offense, and then decide what is the person's relevant conduct. So there are a lot of reasons. We So there are a lot of reasons we don't think Pinkerton and conspiracy really fit here. What's happening here is the person is convicted of an offense, the person is convicted of what the government has charged, there is a statutory maximum, and this commission is giving a guideline to suggest where within that maximum the sentence should be imposed. That should include jointly undertaken activity, for reasons that the criminal law has always looked at jointly undertaken activity as being a more serious factor for purposes of sentencing. So I know that's a lot of things I said, but there are just a number of reasons that we don't agree with that.
If I could just talk, there's one part of it that I'm not sure it was clear from what we're, of what we're proposing. I agree with the statement that conspiracy and sometimes Pinkerton liability can be broader than what this guideline is going to get at. But our proposal would be to make that the gate. And then you still have the other three points. It has to be within the scope of the criminal activity that the defendant agreed to jointly undertake, furtherance of, and either intent or reasonably foreseeable. I think requiring it as a, as a charging decision by the government will serve an important purpose of putting defendants on notice, especially in a guilty police situation, that they are looking at that type of exposure.
I'm sure we'll see.
Oh, did I, did you want to jump in? I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. No, go ahead.
Briefly, the advantage of Pinkerton or Option A is a heightened in, in the tent. The government would have to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt, there would have to be a specific intent for Option A. Those are good things. Second, I have to correct the records, the move toward real offense sentencing was not to limit the power of the government, it was to expand the power of the prosecutor, and we would take issue with that.
Mr. Debold, and maybe now for Mr. Sands as well, there's an application note in the guideline manual right now that talks of an example about two people, they're driving to a bank robbery. One's the driver, and one's actually going to go in the bank and, and rob the bank. And the driver says, "I know you've got a gun, just don't shoot the gun, okay?" And of course, the guy goes in, and he goes and he shoots the gun and kills somebody. Now, if I, if I get your position correctly, it would, the shooting would be, would not be counted under the guidelines, because it was not intended by the defendant under your proposal. And so that example would have to be removed from the guidelines, if your example and you're the policy that you're suggesting were adopted by the commission. Am I getting that right?
Where conduct was not intended by the defendant, even though within the scope of the activity that the parties undertook, and that, that's, that would be our position.
A better twist would be that the driver, girlfriend says, "Just go in with a note, we just need the money for a hit, we don't want any trouble, don't hurt anyone." And then the boyfriend, bad things happen. The girlfriend would be limited then.
Always go with the girlfriend.
Yes.
Example.
If I could, if I could comment on that. Again, it's similar to the answer that I was giving to Commissioner Barca. These are substantial changes in, in longtime criminal law. The United States Supreme Court, long before Pinkerton, Pinkerton was just the ultimate expression of it, has looked to reasonably foreseeable conduct as the scope of a conspirator's liability. And there are reasons for that bedrock principle of law going back hundreds of years. Sure, we could look at it from the perspective of the defendant, who's sitting in the car, who doesn't want to be responsible for the person shot inside the bank. But if we look at the, from the perspective of the victim, it's the same thing that my colleague, Mr. Wagner, was talking about this morning with regards to the economic crime. If we look at it from that perspective, here we have a driver who participated in the robbery, facilitated it, brought the person there, is ready to speed him away, and is responsible for what's reasonably foreseeable. Intent has never been a requirement under the criminal law.
I just have to add, I, I don't think that's a bedrock conception, and that's why federal conspiracy law is brought in the federal system, because most states don't go as far as Pinkerton does. I mean, it is, it is an expansion of where the, the common law viewed, was, which was usually just accessory liability, where you did have to have an intent. I mean, it's not to say that's not what the federal law is now, but it isn't true that that's a universal conception of what multi actor liability would consist of.
Well, sure. I appreciate the focus on federal law, and that, of course, is what, what we're dealing with here, and thus appropriate federal sentencing.
Can I, can I sound... In my district, typically, conspiracy is charged together with a substantive count. I don't know if that's true across the country, but you almost always see the conspiracy, the 846, and then you, then you see the individual distribution. I don't know if that's gives you, is, is that required by the manual, and is that true across the country? Because I'm not sure how much this debate makes a difference.
It's not required, but like I said before, Your Honor is exactly right, that conspiracy charges are brought when the prosecutor at the outset of the case believes it's useful and appropriate to charge conspiracy. So we're not, we probably are not dealing with a lot of cases in which it's not there, but still, for purposes of sentencing, we believe that the commission got it right in looking at, again, you're within the statutory maximum for the offensive conviction, that can't be changed. But there will be jointly undertaken activity where there may not be a conspiracy charge in a particular case. As long as you're not exceeding the statutory maximum, that shouldn't be a concern.
Is that true in the, in your other districts, that conspiracy counts are usually brought as well?
Yes, yes. It's usually a triaffecta.
And your?
Yeah, I've seen it, and that, which is why I don't think it's going to be, it would be a big burden on the government to have that kind of gate, as I said. It gives notice, I mean, so basically, he's defending the cases where the government decides not to bring a conspiracy charge, and then lo and behold, we get to sentencing, and the defendant is suddenly hearing that they're going to hold him accountable for conduct that was jointly undertaken without any kind of notice in the charging document, that that's, that's what was on the horizon. So, you know, I think in that situation, you know, and the example that we heard from, from Commissioner Robuski, yes, you're going to have two different people with different culpability. The guy who goes in and uses the gun, even though the discussion was, "Let's not use it." The question is not whether they're both guilty of a crime, they're both guilty of a crime. The question is, who's more culpable, and what level of culpability should, what level of conduct should you hold the person who's in the car responsible for? And, and, and when you have the cases where that just doesn't make sense to a judge, you depart.
Thank you very much. You kept us wide awake after lunch. It was a very engaged debate. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Your Honor.